Soto. Councilor Parker.
Yes.
Hello.
Godner and Leanne Aubrey. Um, okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And, okay. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any corrections? I guess that would have been first. Okay. New business. Actually, we're picking up where we were before.
Yes.
Trying to talk about what we need to do to kind of finalize what we've been talking about.
Oh, it doesn't highlight. Oh, when you guys get these minutes, it doesn't show the highlights that we've done.
Um.
I have to go, I have to go back to my folder.
Oh, let's see, I've got, uh, just one second. I think I probably have them. Now, I've got the 11th, I've got the 15th. Anybody have a copy of the last minute? What did you want to change, Julia?
Not on the minutes. I'm just going back to where, when I hi- when I send you guys the minutes, I highlight what we've done or talked about.
Yeah.
And saying where we have to go back. But that's okay. I'll just. Hi there.
Oh, Betsy.
Hi there.
Okay. Uh, we're going back to try to just pick up whatever we had left off. Um.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, um, Leanne, we're at rule eight, rules of order.
Okay, I think we've got a couple before that, though, uh, that we had gone over before. Do you want to just review those a little bit? Cause we've got, uh, rule number seven. Order, order of business and agenda.
You want me to go back to those?
Yeah. And then we'll go to eight, okay? Mr. Mustache. Um, we wanted to have it, uh, if I'm correct, we wanted to have the roll call. Um, declare a quorum and call to order. Um, we talked about changing it, call to order, roll call and declare a quorum. Okay?
Correct.
Uh, consent calendar. We talked about moving the consent calendar as a whole. Um, then we were going to have approval of minutes, administrative items. Reading of donations when they can be read. Now, we have on here the deletion of the town council referral list, and I think we wanted to just move that, not delete it.
No, I, uh, I thought we were deleting it.
Well, I thought we had talked about it. We needed a reminder of things we were supposed to be following up on. That would only be, that would only.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt. I know that we had talked about the, um, referral list and the importance of understanding that you've got to have a way of getting things deleted. And usually what you'll see there are just the things that are going to be on your current agenda. But sometimes there are, are things slipped in there that the council committee at the hall has said, you know what, we're just not going to work on that anymore. So that's how you get rid of them.
Right. I understand the, the process, but we don't do it regularly because we don't have, we never have a list to referral, refer to.
Yeah, because your, your current legislative program does not run like a legislative program. It's more of a date. I don't know what it is, but it doesn't do that. Our old system and this, this format is, is leftover from our old legislative system that was a true legislative piece of software and it would generate a referral list. So let's say you could have six referrals under your name and those would go on to this list and you could generate that list and, and it would tell you who, who, who owned that referral, what date it was, it was put onto the referral list and so forth, and anything that happened with it, any history. But this program that we have now that we're paying god awful money for, it doesn't do any of those things.
Um, is there any way that it could be done, added to it once a month?
No, it would have to be done internally and, you know, there's a lot of room for mistakes. So John, John's really going to have to think about this. I mean, how, what happens to, do referrals automatically get assigned a number? And if that's true, how do you keep track of it? I, I haven't, I can't tell how, how he does it, if he does. So that's something we have to talk, you know, I can, I can make a note and talk to him uh, tomorrow, or at least get, get that on a list of things to talk to him about. Okay. Uh, you do that, you want me to do that and then email you guys?
Yeah, that would be funny because I, I don't know how personal you feel about it, but I think at least once a month, we need to review that list. What do you think, Andre?
Yeah, no, I agree. Um, especially considering there are a lot of matters that each counselor uh, wants to discuss and obviously so much time. I think it's important that, you know, and, and times when we just need to take a pause and then maybe revisit issues, there is a system in place that allows for that. So, um, whether, you know, a software allows it, or, or, you know, that needs to be internally managed, as, as the clerk suggested, I think means to be seen, but I, I think having some kind of system in place that allows for that is, is, um.
All right. If you could, if you could talk to him and tell him, we're not looking for it each, each meeting, we're looking for it once a month.
Oh, absolutely. I will definitely, I'm making a note right now. Now, ask town manager about referrals, how to track them, how to report to the council on them, how to, how to delete them. Yep. Got it.
Okay. All right. I know we had talked about that a little bit before, so I'm glad we're reviewing it again. All right. Now, Andre, you wanted to talk about, I believe it was under eight?
Yeah, so, um, I think once we're past rule seven, um, so pretty much rule one through seven is pretty rudimentary. Um, there isn't a whole lot of, um, you know, items that I, I think are uh, that are, should be debatable because I, I think they're pretty cut and dry and, um, but once you get into rule eight, um, that's where kind of the minutia, you get into the minutia of the meeting and, and, um, in, you know, uh, kind of how, how the meeting, uh, takes place, especially as it relates to, you know, debate and, um, you know, parliamentary, uh, rule, you know, the rules of order. Um, so I, uh, kind of took a stab at, um, changing some of the language from pretty much um, section A through, um, section D. I, I didn't have a chance to get through the rest of them, but that was still a lot of, um, a lot of material and I think encompasses a lot of what we, um, of how the council conducts its business, um, principally the, um, you know, debate and, um, and how one makes a motion. So, um, I guess we could start with section A and then I can kind of propose, um, I'll propose a change and then we can deliberate as to whether or not it's appropriate.
Um, may, may I say something?
Sure.
Maybe, um, email us so we all can see the same thing that you've suggested. I'm just saying, uh, because if you've already typed something out, I don't want to have to retype something that you've already done.
Does that help?
Yeah, but how, okay.
And, all right, we can look at that and then you can send that to us. Did you send it already? Because we had talked about that.
Yeah. So I can, what I can do is, uh, am I off the, can you just see, can you see my screen now?
Yeah, you're, you're, you're screening and you're highlighting things.
Okay.
Uh, okay, go ahead.
All right, so parliamentary authority. Um, instead of the current, change it to latest edition. Um, because there's, I mean, then, I think latest is more kind of intuitive.
It's appropriate.
Uh, addition of Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, um, shall govern the council in all cases in which they are applicable, provided they do not conflict with these rules, the town charter, uh, ordinances or applicable state statutes.
Okay.
Um, so it, it's really just print, again, changing latest and then deleting, um, where, where, uh, where it's currently written as an effect on the date of adoption of these rules. Um, so that's deleted and then the addition would be the latest. And this is for section A.
Alrighty. I don't see any problem with that. Juliet? Juliet?
I'm here. I'm just reading it carefully. I always, that's why I, I, I'm a visual person, physical person. I print stuff down, so.
No problem.
That's fine. I, I am gonna have a question about section B, though.
Yep, all right, no problem. All right, let's move on to, um, points of order.
Which is questions of order. Why the change?
So, uh, point, points of order, questions of order is in the latest, uh, Robert's Rules, they changed it, you know, they in, it, it's always been an interchangeable change. Some people call it point of order, some people call it, um, question of order, their interchangeable term.
So is it the current version, questions of order or points of order?
Uh, points of order.
Under what section? I just want to know, just in case they ask us.
That's eight B.
No, no, no. In the book, in Robert's Rules.
Um, I can grab them, the rules, if you'd like.
Yeah, I just have my book out. I just want to make sure, because if somebody asks us, we got to point it out and say, this is where we got it from. And why we changed it from questions of order to points of order. I just want to be, have my ducks in a row.
Yeah. Um, just looking it up in my Robert's Rules. Sorry, bear with me. Um, your book number may be different than mine. Actually, I'll just look up the online version because that would be the latest.
Okay, that's all right. We'll, we'll get it. Okay, um. Now, is this what it was before? You've got the yellow here. The mayor or presiding officer shall preserve order and decorum.
Um, can we move that to section? Make that question one, I mean, numero uno?
Okay.
Because it's actually starting off with the mayor and the decorum of the things.
Yeah, so, oh, so you're saying, um, so.
She's presiding, if the mayor's presiding, they need to set the tone for the whole thing. And then we do the enforcement of any councilman insists on enforcement of the rules.
All right, I see what you're saying. So, um, so basically, uh, flip one, one and two.
Yep, just make a, just write on the side of it, saying we're switching. And if you could just email me that, then I can update the stuff on our side.
Okay, let me, let me do that now. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
You know what I'm going to do? Well.
Just leave it and I'll remember. I'm just going to switch out one and two on it.
Okay, um.
We lost your, uh, page.
I know. Can you, um, what I'm doing real quick, I'm sorry, Leanne, um, I'm, I'm just going to email the, the sections to you. Um, to you guys now, if you don't mind.
Make your computer easier to use. Windows will read and scan this list automatically. Filter keys, high contrast.
Okay. You get it.
Exit narrator, exiting narrator.
Who was that?
I don't know. Was that you, Andre? Somebody on your computer talking to you?
Yeah, I did. I heard like a robot. Did you?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. That was odd. I think maybe that was, um, one of my tabs that I have opened. All right, here we go. You should get it in ten seconds.
You're emailing it?
Yes.
Can't even believe this.
Okay.
Not the one I want.
Betsy, I'll, I'll CC you on this as well.
Okay, that'll just go to my, um, town email. I'm not in my town email, so I'm not at my office. I'm at home.
Do you want me to send it to your personal email?
No, no, never.
No.
I mean.
This is town, county stuff.
This is, this is my, my office. I'll, I'll just have it. I know, I, I know what you're talking about anyway.
Okay, there we go.
There we go. Got it.
All right.
Okay.
So let me get back to this screen share.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, now Juliet, you were having to keep a, um, you, you wanted those together? Is that what?
No, I want number two, the mayor. It, because I'm just going by what we originally had because you start off, the mayor may speak on something or shall decide the questions and you're changing that part. We speak on.
Number two, I've got the mayor or presiding officer shall preserve order and decorum or may speak on points of order in preference to an, another counselor?
Yes, so I believe I should, that's just me, that it should start off with it, the mayor, and then any councilman insists on enforcement. Flip the two, because she's got to preside, she's got to set, or he or she has to set the standard right from this jump start. And then any counselor can may insist on the enforcement of the rules.
Well, it says here, mayor or presiding officer shall decide all questions arising under this.
He, yes, I, instead of it being the first item, he has it as the second item. I just think it should be the first item, not that any council may insist on enforcement.
I, I, um, I totally agree with you, Juliet. Um, and if, if you, I, um, I think I put, allowed the screen sharing back on. Is the change, uh, is this what you were, um, had been suggesting?
Yes.
So the mayor or presiding officer shall preserve order and decorum or may speak on points of order in preference to other counselors. The mayor.
Yep. And then. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And we kill a decision by the mayor. Wait a minute. Oh, you renumbered everything? So you added to it?
Yeah, I, so I added a few sections, um, principally so it, uh, towards the end, um, creating the lan- language so that people, the presiding officer knows really how to deal with the question of order and then, um, um, you know, because we had it previously in the rules, but it really creates, um, kind of a framework so that if there is, um, you know, case in point, I remember during the budget deliberations, it was, you know, um, I'm shocked we even did it as, as well as we did because of, you know, how new we were to Zoom, but, you know, we, there was a few points of contention during, uh, the, one of the budget meetings and emotions got a little high and I think, um, you know, every, every, um, there were several points of order called on, on one of our colleagues. But it wasn't necessarily clear how to deal with that. Um, we did have a proceed, we did have procedures in our rules um, to deal with that. So technically the rules committee, um, and, and based on our, our rules would, would, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As, I was just gonna say, as one of the, I, as one of the people that called point of order as part of the rules committee, I was trying to make a point that we should, uh, we went off topic. We just started discussing next year's budget, 2022, when we can't discuss that, we have to go with what the motion was on the floor is where I was trying to go with that. And then everybody kept going on and on. That's why I kept trying to say, I have the point of order.
No, and I, I'm, I'm not disputing the validity of the, of the point of order. I'm just saying it in terms of creating a framework so that we know how to deal with a rule, how to properly rule on a rule of order, not so much whether or not it was right or wrong, but simply creating, uh, if a more understandable framework so that if it were to happen again, we know that instead of recessing and just letting kind of emotions cool down, that actually if there's a point of order and somebody appeals to that point of order, um, then that, um, would go directly to the rules committee. Rules committee would deliberate on that, uh, on that in the validity of the, that point of order. And then we would make our recommendation and then the, um, it would be put to a vote by the council on, on whether or not the decision of the chair should be sustained and if it is.
Excuse me, who's doing the dishes?
That would be my, uh, my esteemed girlfriend, uh, Kayla.
All right.
Hello.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But, uh, yeah, but nonetheless, um.
You can try, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it, it, I think it creates a more understandable framework or for, uh, account, you know, chair and then all, the presiding officer and then the councilwoman we have these.
Okay.
But again, it, it's not, it would not, the rules do not, would not impact whether or not the act, you know, um, the point of order is, you know, whether or not a given counselor was right or wrong. It just creates a, um, a more, um, understandable framework to deal with those points of order.
There's an. You know, it, in there, it also says, you know, subject to appeal.
Right, so if you, if you are, if there is a point of order called on you, so say, I, you know what, Leanne, I call a point of order on you. What you are saying, discussing is not germane to the topic at hand, right?
Yeah.
And you can say, Madam Chair, uh, or, you know, Ma- Madam Mayor, I appeal, oh, oh, and, and, and then the, the mayor says, yes, you are out of order. Then you can say, I appealed, I appealed, um, the, the question of the question or point of order. And then at that point, the rules committee would convene, which is in our current rules, they would convene, they would make a recommendation. And then the mayor would ask the whole council, uh, if they, if her deci- if his or her decision should be sustained. And if they say, uh, yes, um, then the point of order stands and if there, the majority says no, then the point of order does not stand and they can continue with whatever they were debating.
Okay. Moving on. Are you okay with that so far, Juliet?
Yes.
Okay, Betsy, you okay with that?
Oh, sure. Sounds, sounds perfectly logical.
I don't know where you are, Betsy, but you're rather happy, so that's good.
I'm at home. I'm always happy at home.
Oh, okay. Um, let's see.
Judging by the fact that Kayla stopped doing dishes, I think she's happy with it too, so.
Okay. Uh.
Okay.
I'm not sure why she's doing dishes. I did them a couple hours ago, so.
Uh, they weren't clean enough for.
I was gonna say that, but I'm not gonna go there. I'm sorry. Sorry, Andre. Sorry, Councilwoman, sorry, sorry, sorry. All right. Okay, we just added a word and then.
Number six.
You mean C?
C, yes.
I have six here. The appeal may be referred.
Oh, you're looking at the other. All right.
Okay. I don't even see it in.
It is, it's, um, it's number five on his.
Is this the precedent, uh, is this section C precedent?
No, no, she's looking back at number six that you have on, um.
Go back, go, go up a little bit, go up a little bit. Okay, number six, she would have.
Yeah, it's number five on yours right now, Andre.
Five, okay, um. Mayoral duties?
Uh, no, no, no. Go back to rule eight.
Yeah.
And section B.
Yeah.
Is number five on yours. It's.
Okay.
It's number six on ours now.
You know what?
Appeal.
Because I, I can, um.
You flipped it for me.
Okay. Did it, did it, I didn't change any language though, right?
Uh, the appeal of looking. No, you added stuff. This is, you took, took the appeal and added to. All right, I see what you were doing.
You know what it was? I think it was because I had, there was another, um, it was, when, when you said, when you suggested Juliet to flip one and two, there was another, um, another subsection and it was redundant, so I just added it into two.
Okay.
As, so it, I just eliminated the redundancy because I had, it was just, it was extra words. So I deleted it.
Okay. You may refer to the rules committee. Okay. We talked about that, the charter and, and council made the sense of the purpose of the appeal. Okay. And then after council convenes, convened, reconvenes. Okay, so we're now on one, I'm fine with one through seven.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and number, okay, now we're on rule eight, C.
Can you go up a little bit, Andre?
All right, yes, um. Uh, go, go, you want me to scroll up?
Yes.
Okay, I'm scrolling up.
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
The other way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, right there.
Okay.
Go to precedent.
Precedent of motions, okay.
There we go.
All right.
Okay. During debate in the session.
During a debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of a motion on the floor at any time may interrupt a speaker to be with.
I don't know if I like that.
That doesn't make sense. To.
I don't like that.
So, so you know how sometimes we'll make, somebody will make a motion? Uh, and then we, um, and then this is the mayor will say, oh, okay, well, we'll have to withdraw your emotion, motion so that they can make theirs and, and then the person says, okay, yes, I withdraw my motion.
Yeah, but that's if we're voting on something.
Yes.
This is saying during a debate.
Well, per, see precedent prior, it, it, this deals specifically with motions.
Are you saying this pertains to somebody objecting?
No, 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 no. This is when, this is when somebody makes a motion and then there's like a friendly motion and then the person, uh, the mayor says, oh, so are you comfortable with withdrawing your motion so we can deliver? And then the person said, yes, I, I'll withdraw my motion.
Yes, but I don't think we should enter, may, I don't know if I like the part about they may interrupt. I think it should be led. If, yeah, I.
Well, just to, so that we don't have to keep, um, uh, debating on it, the person can say, you know, I, I withdraw my motion so then we can move on to the new one. Instead of, because if we have, they have to wait and if there's a, a spe- a series of people who are speaking and you're the last person in the queue to speak, but you were, want to withdraw your motion, it would be inappropriate to simp, to interrupt. It would be inappropriate to simp- to interrupt um because of our current rule, because of our rules, right? You have to be, you have to be I um um you have to be acknowledged by the mayor to speak. So current, I think could the current language we have is something along the line of um motion on the floor at any time they interrupt the speaker to withdraw um their motion. Upon request of the mover and consent of the council.
Right.
So it 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 um. It doesn't really change anything, it just like.
Maybe they can say that request. I don't know. I don't know if they should interrupt while somebody's having a discussion about it. If there's a debate or discussion, then they get ready, withdraw their motion, they're gonna cut that person off. To say, I'm gonna withdraw my motion.
Well, excuse me for just a second, it might be interpreted, you know, when you have a motion on the floor, you can't. Maybe it's interpreted so you can't put another motion on the floor, but this would allow a person to withdraw without going, making an actual motion, you know what I mean?
But I I know, I understand that part, but you know, if somebody interrupts someone speaking, I think that might cause an issue, that's just me.
In full, full disclosure, that would that interrupting a speaker to withdraw their motion is literally pulled from straight from the rules we currently have.
Where? And any motion may be withdrawn by the mover before amendment or decision. Upon request of the mover and consent of the council.
Yes, that that's, that's exactly what I pulled from and then added to it. So all I added was, if you look at the screen share, the the yellow drawing and debate and discussion of the motion.
But I'm looking at it now, but it does not say may interrupt a speaker. So that's all yellow, that should all be yellow, that doesn't say that in this current version, unless I'm mixed. Missing something on my page four. On my original page four.
Okay, um. Let's see. So that's.
Go to eight.
Eight, alright. This is an old one.
Nope, um well, you're 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 not the twenty-seventh, you gotta go to the town website to get the current one.
Here, here.
There it is, yes.
Emotion, um. Oh, you're right. I don't know where I got that from. I'm sorry. I misled you.
No, I just think you were adding to it, I just don't. I just don't feel comfortable, you know, I don't know how we're gonna do that, I understand where the intent is. I just don't think they're going to may go for it, you know what I mean?
So it in, so wha- how would you suggest um Counselor Parker that?
I know, I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
I to- I totally agree with you, obviously, we don't want to be rude to the p- the speaker, right? You know, whoever has the floor, um but I I do worry sometimes, especially if we're you know, we're short on time or, you know, we have a mechanism in place where the person who makes the motion says, you know what? I say you're their last person in the queue to speak, there's a lot of people are gonna be speaking on the motion. I'm gonna withdraw it so we don't have to debate this in a way where we can move to the appropriate motion to deliberate on.
Yes, I I just wondering if maybe we could have the person that put the motion on the floor.
Yes.
I don't know if they can call out to, I don't know if this is proper and um, no, cause that's still interrupting. Oh.
Consider it like the only time other than a point of order where you can interrupt a speaker. There is no other time where it's appropriate to do so.
Well, they still have to address the mayor, correct?
But correct, correct.
Well, then then we could probably say, um, let's see. Uh during a debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of the motion may request, may request of the mayor to withdraw their motion. So now we're not saying they're interrupting or anything, they just can request of the mayor. To uh.
I'm gonna say his or her motion.
Yeah.
You wanna take a stab at it, Juliette?
I know, during a debate, I know, I know, it's and you know where I'm going with this.
I do.
Gardner.
I do.
I just, I just don't want.
You're far quieter than I am.
Trying to, I'm trying to, okay, during a debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of a motion on the floor at any time may requ- quest of the mayor may put forth, may put forth, may put forth. A request to the mayor to withdraw his or her motion is still gonna be before. Right, it's still gonna be before the amendment or decisions made. Before the amendment.
For decision is made, we don't need amendment.
Well, cause it could be an amendment, right? Oh, how about?
Doesn't really matter if they're withdrawing it, we're just saying that.
That's true, um the decision.
Because if they want, uh Counselor Parker, if they, if uh someone wants to make an um to amend the motion, they have, they still have, must speak through. I s- direct that to the mayor.
Correct. Alright. During a debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of the motion may put forth to the, may put forth a request to the mayor to withdraw his or her motion before the decision.
Just withdraw, period.
Withdraw.
That would end the discussion. Do you think we have to have the unanimous consent of the council? For this person to be able to withdraw their.
No, it does say that.
So why don't?
Uh not, how about not unanimous, it can be, it says consent of the council, we don't have to have it unanimous.
Yeah, that's, I think that's better.
Okay.
And the consent. Of uh council, wait a minute, how much time do we have?
We we have about ten minutes.
Okay, you know where I'm going, I'm trying to, uh and I get where we're going with this, so I'm gonna try to type this in. Please forgive me if I do not type this up tonight, it'll take me a couple of days.
Don't apologize for that and and also we, I, you know, I think we can move on and to the you know, and we can go back to this, but I, that's okay. And I I did this for you, Counselor Parker, I added number three. And um it just added language, when a council, a question is before the council, the chair shall refer to the precedents of motions in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order. So.
Yes, thank you.
We just follow verbatim Robert's rules, we don't TV.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Yes, I'm happy with that one, okay. Scroll down a little bit, alright.
Alright, um, so I.
Do you think that under counselors shall confine their remarks in debate to the pending question? Do you think it might be possible to put in a time limit?
I was thinking about that too, Counselor, Madam Chair.
We get so long-winded.
I I, no more than five, I don't even think we should be doing maybe five minutes, but the other thing is.
There used to be some time limits in here, I thought.
There are, it's five minutes.
But then they they tend, we tend to go off topic if we're not sticking to the right topic, you know?
Right.
Add and it drives me nuts. Drives me nuts.
Well, we've got, yeah, the counselors shall not speak more than once upon any question until another member who wishes to speak shall have relinquished the floor. Counselors are limited to three minutes each time they speak on a question.
Wait a minute, which one are you looking at? It was, where are we?
I know, I think we should make it three.
Oh, we're we're on limits of debate now?
Unless, unless the consensus of the council lets you talk longer, I mean, you sometimes it takes you more than three minutes to get all your mid-bits out, you know?
And who is timing, you know?
The mayor does.
That's the other thing. Yeah.
I bought a retire while I was on vacation and it's for three minutes, so I believe you go with the three minutes.
She uses her phone.
Alright, so wait a minute, before we go to the limit of the debate, I understand that part, to three minutes. Oh gosh, it's popping up, e, three minutes. Um, you added something to the debate or did you add, can combine them all together?
I I I did and this actually, this was the only section where I didn't hi- have the yellow highlighted or white highlighted. Not that it really matters, cause clearly when you look at section C, I got that all wrong anyway. But uh.
Wait a minute.
But.
Wh- what's that first one?
Uh is this debate? So the first one, I I I'm now looking at it, I'm not sure how I really feel about it. Um it just talks about how really the mayor or the Presiding Officer should refrain from um deliberating on a, you know, a partisan issue um as the chair. And in it, it really, you know, in Robert's Rules, it it does state that really the chair in many respects should operate as kind of a neutral arbiter unless, you know, it's but there, nothing is precludes them from from weighing in on an issue as they should.
So.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so basically, I'm not sure I I really uh. I don't think we really need it.
Okay.
Um, cause it's in, it's in Robert Tools anyway. But. Yeah, so if you delete it, nothing would really change. And you're back at really that, so during discussion or debate, no counselor shall speak unless recognized by the mayor. Uh any counselor who desires to speak shall address the chair and upon recognition by the Presiding Officer shall confine themselves to questions under debate, avoid injecting a personal note into debate or alluding to improper motives in members at the risk of being ruled out of order.
Oh, I like that.
And three, a member once recognized shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is to be called out of order or as herein otherwise provided, which is, you know, uh as it herein otherwise provided is for dealing with um the this section, which, you know, we're we're still deliberating on. And um, uh counselor shall confine their remarks in debate to the pending question.
Is that, did you already say that?
Uh, oh, did I?
No.
Well, the first one.
Yeah, I got up here, shall confine themselves to the question under debate.
Okay, yes.
We've already got that.
Uh, yep, and then uh the ca- the counselor moving the adoption of an ordinance or resolution shall have the privilege of closing the debate. So uh si- so case in point, you know, um the counsel, one counselor, um he did the plastics reduction ordinance, you know. Or he was really one of the biggest, you know, big pushers of the ordinance, you know, and he once were about to pass the ordinance, he would have, you know, have the right to make final, final remarks. Um, so it's a nice little thing for people who have worked on an issue, they they can have the ability to to stick on.
This isn't really uh issues.
That's not a debate.
This is, this is not a debate and this is not issues, this is when there's been a point of order. Isn't it?
No, that number fu- number six is not the time, that's not the debate, uh when they're bringing that up.
Debate, okay, alright.
But. I. Number six is not a.
You're looking at D, right, debate?
Yes, yes, D six.
We're not talking about um.
I am so sorry, I think I put you, um so when I, when I've, I hit the screen I'm sharing. Um and now I have force, four subsections and under D, based on the feedback you've given me. Uh or just, and so I I eliminated the first number one.
Yes.
Right, and then so you would be left with um five or four.
Four, because you removed uh number five.
So if you loo- look at my screen, it should still be up, you'll see uh the debate. So uh now there's just s- four subsections.
Um, okay, number six. I I'm not sure how that goes, even if you're bring, if the person's bringing forth an ordinance or resolution. Cause we all have to make a decision on that, that does have to be debatable. But you want the person to have the closing to debate?
Yeah, so the person who is um would be, would be recognized as making the fin- uh final words when they're, they move that specific ordinance or the.
You know, here when you've got, I don't know, I think we're talking about anything, but we, you've got here, a member once recognized shall not be interrupted when speaking unless it is to be called out of order or as herein otherwise provided.
Yes.
They could go on for an hour if they wanted, we don't have any provision there to say, whoa, you've gone past your three minutes, you've gone past your five minutes.
Oh, absolutely, because it, the mayor, the mayor does. So if the mayor and the ma- if they're pa- if they speak past their a lot of time, their five minutes, three, five minutes.
Right, I, why wouldn't we say that?
Cause you already did.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
But i- if you feel like, I mean, um cl- Madam Clerk, do you feel like that should be what would um?
Well, if you're treating each section separately, then yes, you'd put it in there, but if you, if you get irritated with redundancy, then you're, you know, then you're gonna be stuck with it. So you you, you might have someone at at council saying, oh man, you already said that three other times.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, it's it's, try it, see if you get away with it. I do wanna home and home, you wanna bring it home, but you mean it, three minutes.
Yeah, I think that, uh I I think we should, because that's the biggest problem we have with the counselors, we go on too long. You know, and if there was, if we keep mentioning the limitation, I think we might get people to understand they've gotta be precise and and keep it, you know, within three to five minutes. And not go on forever.
So um Madam Chair, I think where that would be most appropriate would be uh with, under section E three, where it says if, so um if we're good with debates, that would be fall under limit E, such an E limits of debate. And number three, counselors are limited to five minutes each time they speak on a question. I think that's where would be appropriate to add the mayor, you know, in terms of the mayor, um you know, upholding that that rule.
Okay. So we're switching that from five to three?
I think we should try. We'll probably get opposition, but we could try. But you know, if somebody's really passionate about something, you can give them your three minutes.
That's true, you can yield, you the, yield the four to one.
So I mean, you know, Andre, if you get going on something, and I think it's important for it to continue on and I don't have a strong feeling about it. You know, I yield you my time.
And also, ab- absolutely, you and and there's nothing precluding um counselors from after every counselor has had the ability to speak, they can have another, another pass at it.
Right, but only two.
You wa- only want two passes at it?
Yes, you're an original statement and then a follow-up statement.
So, original and follow-up.
Yep.
And this is gonna be under.
Would only be after each counselor's had an opportunity to speak if they wish.
Oh, which is number two anyways.
Right, yeah, counselors shall not speak more than once upon any question until other members who wish to speak shall relinquish the floor.
Oh, are you copying it again for us, Andre?
What I'm gonna do, um Counselor Parker, is uh I'm gonna send you the, so see how I'm copying, pasting?
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna now email that to you and then also under that, I'll I'll have um just the normal text. I'm gonna now email that to you and then also under that, I'll, I'll have, um, just the normal text of what, what's in that, so both this verbatim and then.
Thank you, I now work on the other ones because there's a couple of things I, I want to bring forth, but I hadn't gotten a chance, opportunity to do it yet.
I think we're gonna have to, um, we're gonna have to type this, type this up and then review it, because we gotta go to the other meeting, we got just about time enough to sign out and sign in.
Yes, that's what I was just thinking.
And this is John, I, I can't start people in there until this meeting's over, I'm locked out.
Okay.
So, can we stay right on?
No, you, you gotta switch to the other meeting, it has a different webinar ID.
Okay.
I gotta get first and start it.
Okay.
So for all, all inten- hey, John?
Yeah.
For, just saying hi. For all intents and purposes, we're good with, um, so A through D and then we're gonna work on, uh, that.
No, no, just sign, just ask to go, he needs to do other things.
I will not be at your next meeting, just know that, okay?
Okay.
Alright, see you, see you later.
So, so the next meeting is in, in June, the second Tuesday of the month.
I'm talking about this next meeting tonight, not next June.
No, no, I'm saying, no, I'm saying this because I'm gonna get ready to make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, okay. So, I'm, I'm making a motion to, um, what am I trying to do? Oh, fiddlesticks.
Adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn, thank you, I couldn't think of the word, adjourn the meeting and. Until our next meeting is June ninth at five thirty PM.
Second.
And you, and happy birthday next week.
Say, I.
Birthday's the eighteenth.
I.
Thank you, I, thank you, thank you, Betsy.
John, you can take yourself.
Thank you.